Moving to force the non-treatyiness person to the reservation. There's a movie that does a great job telling a story. Eventually, the saga ended in Montana, forty miles from the Canadian border. I just wanted to read the last part of the talk that was given by their leader at the time, Chief Joseph. And he said, "Tell General Howard I know his heart. What he told me before, I have in my heart. I am tired of fighting. Our chiefs are killed, looking glass is dead, Tula Huzod is dead, the old men are all dead. It is the young men who say yes and no. He who led all the young men is dead. It is cold and we have no blankets. The little children are freezing to death. My people, some of them have run away to the hills and have no blankets, no food. No one knows where they are, perhaps freezing to death. I want to have time to look for my children and see how many I can find. Maybe I shall find them among the dead. Hear me, my chiefs, I am tired. My heart is sick and sad. More of the sun now stands. I will fight no more forever." Eventually, Joseph and his people were sent to Oklahoma. And many passed away in that process. Eventually, they were returned to the Lockaway Reservation, which is in Washington, and he was never allowed to return to the Wallauga Valley where his dad was buried. Fast forwarding, nineteen eighty-nine, a descendant of old Chief Joseph began planning a Native American festival in Wallauga. In nineteen ninety-seven, one hundred and sixty acres were first purchased. In two thousand and eight, they were able to place the center pole supporting the shaped parachute. And since then, they've had an annual celebration. It's three days long in the third weekend in July. It's amazing experience. Friday, they have a grand entry. Saturday, they have a lot of different dances and such. And then Sunday, they have what they call Indian church. And I've had an opportunity to be there myself for that celebration. And the grand entry is amazing. They all come, people participate in full regalia. And then the back of the entry is veterans. And what was amazing is they had an open mic session after that. And every one of the veterans that spoke, most of them were from the Vietnam War, talked about how when they came home, the first group of people that ever made them feel welcome back on US soil were indigenous people and indigenous tribes. So if any of you ever have any opportunities, they're very welcoming. It's an incredible part to be of. They've been able to buy several more portions of that land, which was their people's land long ago. And so now they're having more and more of that land. They'll do celebrations, they'll do grazing, they'll do farming and things like that. So it's amazing experience. If you ever have the chance, you will never regret it. And it's there. Wallauga is close to Joseph, Oregon. And it's a very beautiful place and very peaceful and amazing experience.
Oh, thank you. That's great. That's really cool. Okay, so you're up next, Lily, for March, and then you, Jan?
Yes, and then we didn't do housekeeping. I skipped right over you. So if you want to do. Sorry, it's kind of. And anti-clan tags after that.
Okay.
I've got to read the script. Here's the script. Thank you for joining us in this hybrid meeting format. Just a quick few notes. For members of the public who are joining the meeting via computer, you have been muted and entered into the meeting as an attendee. Commissioners, as a panelist who are joining virtually, you are able to mute or unmute your video and mic at your discretion, though we ask you to please mute yourself when not speaking. If you wish to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting and haven't already done so, please raise your virtual hand now to join the speaker's queue in one of two ways. You can click on the blue hand icon, or if you're joining via phone, press star nine. We will lower hands as speakers are called upon. And when the public comment begins, we will announce your name and unmute your microphone. You will have two minutes to speak, after which your microphone will again be muted. Regarding the chat and Q and A functionality of Zoom, please note attendees cannot use these features. Commissioners, please only use the chat function for technological assistance. Lastly, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the Sustainability Commission website. And please feel free to contact the Sustainability Commission if there's testimony you were not able to provide. And with that, I turn it back over to you.
Okay, sorry about that, everyone. I guess that way. Okay, we do have an action item to review and approve. Funny, without my glasses, it looks like it says laundry meeting. And the agenda and January meeting minutes. And thank you. All right, all in favor? All right, great. Okay, so now we will have the public comment period and commissioner response.
I think we have anyone here? There are no answers.
All right.
Excuse me. Do we, so do we have any members of the public attending tonight?
Online.
Online.
Great.
Cool. And we have Laura Allen, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Virtually. Okay, thank you.
All right. Moving right along. It's the main act of our meeting tonight is the presentation of the Urban Forestry Management Plan and Twenty Twenty Two Street Bond. And I hope everyone took a minute. If you hadn't watched it already live in October, I watched it today, so some of these faces are very fresh in my mind. But hopefully, everybody had a chance to do that, at least for the first thirty. And I actually watched the commissioner portion. I mean, commissioner councillor portion as well to see what they were asking and what they were concerned about. I thought that was helpful to sort of add it in and shape a little bit of our discussion maybe later. So. Anyway, would you like to?
Yeah, introduce the folks. So we have Grace and Kamana.
Okay.
We have the Urban Forestry Team here, both folks from that team. We have Perry Peterson, Spencer and Paul. And yeah, I just, Devon and I had talked about just clarifying what the goal is of each presentation. So just to be upfront with that. So the goal of tonight's presentation is for the commission is to learn about the street tree projects funded through the Twenty Twenty Two Street Bond, as well as the Urban Forestry Management Plan, which is going to City Council for approval in April. And so tonight, staff are seeking feedback on both of those projects. You know, they're looking for, do these things align with the city's strategic goals? Are there opportunities for community collaboration? And where might there be inconsistencies or areas that need more specificity? So just keep those things in mind as they get their presentation. I'll turn it over to you both.
Thank you, Lily and Paul, for your time. We really appreciate it. I'm Kim and Alolha on this presentation. So I, I don't have notes, but I am so immersed in these topics that hopefully this goes fine. And then we really, at the end, just want to have a good discussion. Like, what are you, what are you curious about? We dive into more details on those things and answer any questions or brainstorm ideas for, you know, how we can impact some of our climate action plan goals and all of those sorts of things. So let's just dive in. Okay, so these are the things that we're going to talk about. Danielle already gave a really good overview of those things. So we'll just kind of keep shuffling through. Just an important clarification of what we're talking about tonight. So as an urban forestry program, we're responsible for the public right-of-way street trees. So we don't have oversight over private trees. We are even in a bit of a consultant role on park trees, but we do have more influence on public land than we do on private. So that's sort of the framing of what we're talking about tonight. The urban forestry as a program, we, as I said, manage the inventory of about sixty-five thousand street trees. And we, our purpose is to manage and preserve and grow our urban forest. And we do that really utilizing adaptive strategies and focus on sustainability, risk reduction, community engagement, and long-term ecological health. Some of our, three of our most important values that are fundamental to all of the work that we do are here in these wheels to grow and sustain the urban forest, resiliency and emergency response, and environmental justice and equity. And you'll see these themes repeated throughout all of our planning documents. They are fundamental to the strategic framework of our management plan. We're really consistent about those three pillars and everything that we do. Also up here is just a five-year average of the statistics. We, as a program, keep a lot of data. We have, you know, we make points and pins for every work order that we complete, every tree that we visit. And so we, in the last, you know, ten years, have gotten really great data. We can track now trends and understand sort of how long it's going to take us to complete work. What kind of resources do we need and all that stuff? So this is just some of the things that we track. I wanted to point out a couple of them for you. The twenty-four seven emergency response, the number of calls that we've gotten from the community to respond to is about one every four days. And the requests for service that come in are about six every business day. So we are very responsive and have a good connection with the community. When something's up, they call us. And we are responsive to those needs. And that is always the crux of our issue is trying to balance the incoming requests with the proactive work that we already have scheduled. Tree, tree benefits. So there's, there's a lot here. You can't see it. It, what we want to really reinforce is how tangible this asset of our urban forest really is as a piece of infrastructure. It's one of the only that we can quantify ecosystem service values to our community. And all of these benefits kind of thread on down to the cities' more strategic focused areas. And so they're very much in alignment. Managing an urban forest is so complex. There are daily assault of challenges that come their way. So, you know, land availability, who owns what, tree loss that we can expect and that we can't expect. The impacts of climate change are significant at this point on our urban forest. And so those things need to be dealt with and kind of adapted for each and every day. The, one of the biggest is that seventy-two percent of our urban forest is on private land. So we only have direct influence over twenty-eight percent. And that's not a big chunk, but we can really nail that twenty-eight percent and then hopefully have a ripple effect. Land availability, there's competition for the, all of the land with very relevant, important priority needs for it. And so we have to balance that. And we spend a lot of time doing kind of plan review early so that if a light pole could be moved by feet, we can fit one more tree. You know, it's like those little details are what we spend a lot of time on. Because in urban forestry decisions we're making now are like a century still felt. So the reverberation of that is huge. And we take that really seriously. I go into more, but let's keep it rolling. Okay, so the draft Urban Forestry Management Plan. If you haven't already, I do encourage you to watch that council presentation. It dives into details about the plan, calls out some of the highlights. So I won't get into that too much here. The plan is also linked in your packet. If you do want to review it in more detail, we invite you to do that. It's open right now for stakeholder review through March first. And then we're planning to finalize the plan by late spring of this year and then really work towards implementation of that plan. One of the things that I wanted to just call your attention to is that, you know, we've had a management plan. It's thirty-three years old. Some of it is actually still very relevant, but so much has changed. And the way that we structured this version of the plan is a vision and action. So we've really tried to set the vision and then have actionable steps to get there that are very tangible. So in doing so, we utilized the Parks and Recreation System Plan, six planning districts to create customized solutions for each of those districts. The needs of southeast are going to be very different from Bethel. And so we wanted to look at those districts and with their unique characteristics and really decide what our priorities in those districts need to be in order to kind of bring everybody up to reach the goals that we're looking for. It's not a one-size-fits-all. So take a look at that. And if you have any questions, please reach out to us anytime. Our Climate Action Plan, the R eleven through R sixteen, are the urban forestry related actions. And they touch everything that we do in our program. So these are fundamental, again, to the way we do our work. And the service that we, that we provide could be nested under one of these actions. So they're very critical to how we are doing work. And, you know, in, in that, we are actually making some very good progress on these actions. And I know Danielle's got a report that's going to be coming to council, talking about some of the progress. But one of the ones that we are most excited about is that R thirteen, that Developing Management Plan check. We are in a final stretch of that. That's been a big lift and we're really proud of it. We're going to dive into a couple of the more impactful goals, the thirty percent canopy coverage in the ten-year pruning cycle here next. Okay, so thirty percent canopy coverage goal. That was not a number that just was invented out of thin air. It's a really standard best management practice, not only across the nation, but globally. This three thirty-three hundred rule is one that communities strive towards. And it says that you will have three trees visible from each home, that you will have thirty percent canopy coverage in your neighborhood, and that it will be three hundred meters from a high-quality green space. So for us, that's a thousand feet. And that is something, that's a metric that many communities use. And it's one that we strive for here in Eugene as well, both in the urban forestry program and in parks and open space. We have a resource gap, and I saw Jan's face go, wow, and it's a big number. So let's talk about this a little bit.
I was actually wowing about the three hundred meters. It's like, wow, that was very close.
Oh, great. Yeah. It's one of the benefits of our quality of life here in Eugene, right? We want to honor that and make sure that that's accessible for everyone. So to get to closer to our thirty percent canopy coverage goal, again, thinking in terms of the twenty-eight percent we have influence over. If we were to plant twenty-two thousand five hundred trees and kind of by the year twenty forty, if we break that down into fifteen hundred trees annually in public areas, parks and right-of-way, it's going to be close to a million dollars a year to make that happen. The return on investment is four point two million dollars. So those ecosystem service benefits that those new trees in urban forests bring is a very significant return on investment. But it's, we just wanted to flag this because this is enough, kind of an unfunded need. It's a goal that we've set through many of our, through our Climate Action Plan, using the other planning documents. And we have to figure out, how are we going to get serious about that goal? We're doing everything we can, but we don't have enough funding to reach these levels. The other challenge that we have that is a bit of an unfunded resource gap is the pruning cycle. So the pruning cycle, ten years, is the best management practice. And basically that, you know, if you collapse it to a nutshell, it would be that you have maintained every single street tree once every ten years. So that's the cycle that we would move through to make sure that we are getting the most longevity possible out of our street trees, that they're reaching maturity and that they're staying at maturity for as long as we can. Because that's when they're really a workforce for those environmental service benefits. So proactive pruning is critical to ensuring that. Our five-year average is twelve point eight years. That's pretty good. What we're seeing is a trend towards a little bit longer of a cycle. In FY twenty-three, we were at fourteen years. In FY twenty-four, we were at almost twenty years. We had a storm that year, who might remember, that had an impact. The pressures are trending towards an increase. And so we just wanted to flag that while our goal is ten years, we are kind of stretching further from reaching that goal with our current resources. The storms do draw that resource away to be, again, responsive to the emergent need as opposed to being proactive. There's increased removals due to sidewalk conflicts. In that challenges slide, I showed you that we have about seventy trees removed each year due to that conflict. And those are big, big trees with big roots that are causing problems. But that's, you know, expensive to remove. It's slow. It's time consuming. Again, kind of pulls the team from that proactive work. We're seeing a lot of heat stress and drought implications on our street tree population. It's taking more to maintain them, more work. And then we're having to remove more dead and dying trees because of that stressor. One of the things that also impacted the FY twenty-four number is that it depends on what zone we're doing the pruning work in. We were in the university area in FY twenty-four, and that's a slow go. There's lots of pedestrians. There's lots of traffic control setup that's needed. And so you can't move through that zone as quickly. But we have done, you know, thanks to the fact that we have a lot of data that we are collecting, we can kind of extrapolate, what would it take to reach ten years? We have a target of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that ten-year pruning cycle. We currently have three hundred. So two hundred and fifty thousand dollars additional investment would reach that ten-year pruning cycle. And then importantly, if it were dedicated so that we didn't get pulled into other emergent needs, if there was a separate budget that would ensure that that could continue to happen despite storms or pests or any of the other challenges that we might face. Okay, intermission. We just wanted to show, it's a little hard to see on the screen, but this is really a photo of our urban forest. This is why we work so hard to have an urban forest, because can you imagine that street without those? And, you know, again, importantly, we, we now have the technology to be able to track what are the ecosystem service benefits. And so we just threw a little stats out here for you. So we base this information on data from the US Forest Service and the EPA. We know that the CO2 sequestered by our urban forest is over thirty-two hundred tons and over a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in value. The urban forest also removes pollutants, three hundred and one thousand pounds a year. One point two million dollar worth of service. And then stormwater intercepted trees are an absolute machine when it comes to intercepting stormwater, a hundred and thirty-three million gallons a year. And that's eleven point eight million dollars worth of value add. And I would even change that number because the cost to build stormwater facilities is so, it's also in my section that we do that. We maintain, build them and maintain them, and it's expensive. So let a tree do the work. Okay. Intermission over. Let's get back to business.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So are you talking about the swales? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. Yeah. So just that picture right there is near the federal courthouse, and that's a large vegetated stormwater facility that is doing fantastic work. So is that forest right next to it. Okay, so, um, one of the meat and potatoes, what we wanted to talk to you all tonight about is the transportation bond. So last year, we came to you and we gave you a framework of how we want to allocate those funds, what that might look like, how we were going to prioritize things. And so now we want to put a little bit of detail onto that scaffolding that we presented to you. So for the first time, two million dollars worth of street tree projects were included in that transportation bond. And that amounts to about four hundred thousand dollars a year over the course of five years. So it had a simple goal, increase canopy coverage by planting more trees and remove barriers to make those plantings possible. We've broken it out into two tiers, projects. So a bulk of the funding is going to go towards tier one projects. Seventy-five percent will be utilized to fully plant out the pavement preservation projects identified in the bond that overlap with urban forestry's high priority areas. We're also going to prioritize planting in underserved neighborhoods. And then that funding will be used for tree watering and establishment of those newly planted trees, tree acquisition, site selection, inventory, all of the kind of logistics work that it takes to plant these trees. Tier two level projects, twenty-five percent of the bond proceeds for street trees will be used to resolve any barriers that exist to successfully planting out those tier one project sites. So it's really in service of the tree planting. There's a lot of stump or dead tree removal that might need to take place in order to plant a new tree. Soil remediation is very important. If the soil conditions aren't adequate to, for the lifespan of the tree, we want to fix that before we plant the new tree. And we might need to do some concrete removal to expand planting spaces or some sidewalk alterations while we're there. So those are the kinds of things that would be included in tier two funding projects. We also identified, last time we were here with you, our primary objectives for this money. So just to reiterate that, I just talked about the distribution of funds, our highest priorities being tier one and secondary priority tier two. We're going to prioritize underserved areas. And from an urban forestry standpoint, that means areas with low canopy coverage and socioeconomic vulnerabilities. So where those two conditions are at their highest, those will be our priority planting sites. We're planning to plant four hundred and fifty trees annually with the transportation bond funds. But we want to leverage those funds to really plant a thousand new street trees through all of the variety of funding sources that we have available to us. Importantly, we want to really knock this out of the park. We want to exceed expectations on bond funds utilized for street trees because it is the first year where we've been entrusted with this funding. And so we want to grow community through this, through the visibility of increased planting. We'll have at least one volunteer planting event per season. And then we really want to work to expand our regional partnerships so that we are not just doing this in isolation or alone. It's going to take the entire region focused on it to some degree. We're going to rely on strength, so cost effectiveness by using in-house crews or contractors wherever it makes the most sense. That's what we're going to do. And then leverage our bond dollars wherever possible to increase our return on investment to its maximum possible. Those are our marching orders for what, what we're doing and why. Okay, so what have we been doing? So twenty twenty-four was year zero of the bond. And so we spent a lot of time really gearing up to be prepared to hit the ground running this year in twenty twenty-five. We hired a seasonal planting coordinator who helped us with organizing all of these logistics and getting a plan in place. And so we used our existing inventory data to identify tree planting opportunities. So there's like information that we've collected over the years and we started to pull up all of that together. And then evaluate our equity metrics, which are well-established, and the canopy coverage percentages to really start to hone in on what are our highest priority areas. We also expanded the capacity and the structure of the watering program. So as we plant new trees, we have to really gear up that watering program. I talked to you guys a lot about this last year, but if you recall, we water every new tree for the first three years. And it goes on a cycle of like, first year is every week, and then we start to kind of slowly wean it off until we're like every other week. And then, you know, with the drought conditions we've been facing, sometimes we have to add a fourth year in as the tree requires. So we kind of monitor that transition between the third and the fourth year. We have an active partnership right now with Northwest Youth Corps. They received a grant from the Oregon Department of Forestry focused on green infrastructure and specifically urban forestry. So as a city, we host their teams eight to ten times a year for a week. And that participation led to us hiring four of their participants in our seasonal watering program. So it's a really cool green workforce development. It's one of the goals of their grant, and we were really happy to see it kind of playing out that way. Okay, so how we're going to parse out our first couple of years of planting projects are twofold. The first is the pavement preservation projects that were identified in the bond. There were several locations. Sixteen of Sixteen of those overlap with our high priority planting areas. So on the map, you can sort of see the ones that light up red are the higher priority areas. So in the first two years of the bond, the pacing of the transportation projects, there's these six projects that overlap with our priority areas. So we're going to partner with engineering and make sure that in the construction of these projects, street trees are prioritized. And we're removing barriers where we can. We've already got contractors there. It's already happening. And so we feel like we can really, you know, maximize our planting sites there. And of these six locations, we think we're probably going to get about five hundred new new street trees out of those. Those are primarily arterials, bigger types of transportation corridors. So the other side of this coin is that we are going to plant in underserved areas in neighborhoods. So we can actually kind of reach into that, you know, three trees visible from your home. Metric. Um, and so we now are in the process of kind of ground truthing that inventory data. So you actually have to go to the site. You have to look at it. What are the conditions? What are the barriers? What do we need to, you know? How many trees can we actually get here? Is this a viable spot or not? And those are really hand selected once we've determined our priority areas. Our two priority areas for the early stages of the bond are what are shown here, which is Bethel and River Road Santa Clara. So this call out back, so we just wanted to show you, this is some of the, this is the inventory that we will see on our end of things. And so this is just a project area sample. This is the Echo Hollow Road area, um, near Willamette High School in Bethel. We know that we have two hundred and sixty existing trees there. Um, we have two hundred and seventy five known planting sites. Those are the yellow dots on the left side of the area. The right side has very few dots. We haven't finished our inventory there yet. We suspect we're going to have about five hundred trees that we can plant. It just in this one area. Um, the red dots are stumps that will need to be removed. And uh as we finish our inventory, I suspect there will be some more of those of that type of work to do. So again, using tier one, tier two funding to get planting sites. Um, and interestingly, in this location, uh, about two thirds of the right of way planting sites are currently vacant. So when we come in and we plant all these trees, it can be a huge difference for this neighborhood. It's going to be very impactful in a positive way. Okay, that's a very high level and probably also I talk too much. Uh, kind of covering some really big pieces of information. And so, you know, I, we just want to open the floor to you, like, what are you curious about? What do you want to hear more from this team about? I've got Spencer here, supervisors, the arborist and Paul, who was responsible for spearheading a management plan. And so we, we are here to just brainstorm, discuss, answer questions.
Yeah, oh, wait, I didn't do that. But um, thank you for the presentation. I am particularly interested in hearing more about the actual planting of the trees. So you mentioned Northwest Youth Corps. And a lot of my high school classmates actually participate in that program. So what are some efforts, you know, with like maybe local volunteers or businesses or organizations?
Yeah, great. Thanks for the question. So we've been trying to prioritize this Northwest Youth Corps connection because they've been interested in. We're making sure that their staff, that they, they, they kind of have a vision to engage in the urban forestry work, but they don't have, they need to have, have partners. Help them to, to do that. So for their program specifically, we've been offering time for them to come and work alongside our program, urban forestry to help plant trees. Of water trees, help do the, the technical pieces of just making sure all the water bags are out and the trees are tied up and are healthy. We've been talking to them about pruning needs for trees. We've also been involving them more holistically across parks and open space and natural areas, um, on our stormwater, making some median teams. Help kind of develop their skills and give them exposure to green infrastructure jobs. So they can see if that's of interest to them and something they want to pro- approve, um, continue with their career or pursue more, more diligently with their education.
And then other volunteer work happens regularly. We have a volunteer program in parks. So one of the favorite activities is planting trees. And we also have a very active partnership with Friends of Trees who helps us do um, a lot of planting in the right of way. Right of way volunteerism is challenging because it's a dangerous environment. And so corralling groups of people in the right of way is a little trickier, but where those locations are conducive to that, we definitely try to do that. I, I think there's nothing more empowering than getting your hands on, uh, you know, actively planting a tree. You, you now have to care about that tree quite a bit, especially if they had to dig through rocks to get it in the ground. You have to put some effort in. Oh, yeah. Key. I think it's helpful on the private property influence of things as well. If people have planted a tree in the public. On public land, they may be inclined to let one on their own.
Can I just ask a quick follow up to that one and jump in? So why, why did you say in one place in the presentation that was like, your goal was a minimum of one volunteer event a year that?
In the right of way, like that's, you know, like I said, they're a little trickier to kind of find the suitable location. For that to be safe for volunteers and to for them to really make a difference. So we do multiple volunteer events in natural areas and parks, as Danielle knows. Um, but in the right of way, we will commit to this one.
We also have a contract with um, Friends of Trees and as part of that condition of that contract, they hold a bunch of pruning and planting events. So they kind of act as a liaison force in the community to also to do that work.
I had a question, um, and I may have just missed it. Um, so I know that, I understand the tier one and tier two, but is there like an average cost per tree? Like.
Six hundred and twenty five dollars to plant and establish.
So what does that mean establish?
That's three years of watering and the kind of early tree care, pruning work that needs to be done. And then on the right start.
So then what's the survival rate?
Well, that therein comes the watering program. So it's, you know, there's, it is, there's so many variables to the survival rate. But we're in the nineties. Um, we just walked by a planting location where a tree had to be removed downtown. It takes a lot of abuse. There's, you know, it's tough in some locations to establish. Yeah, so sometimes we're continuing that cycle for more than three years if we have to replace the tree and kind of starts the clock.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of them on high there where people just are cutting.
Downtown stuff, you know, downtown was eleventh, those were two, um, downtown and Highway ninety nine, the two of the areas we really tried to focus on. Uh, both because, because of equity work as well as like eyes on, there's a lot of impact there. A lot of roadway services can be shading adjacent to properties. So uh, we focused on that. It's also, those are challenging areas environmentally, but they're also very challenging culturally uh with all the people down there. So those areas are harder to go. I think we experienced about two thirds of those trees making it the whole way and about one third damaged enough to where we need to remove and replant. So we're trying to, to choose areas to where we can be really strategic with our efforts, right? When we show up to an area, we're kind of able to do the whole work consistently as opposed to kind of planting one tree here and there. And then having to drive all the rest of the area to water once a week. So trying to building the most efficiencies we can as a part of that work.
Um, I have a couple of questions. One was kind of a follow up question to Lily's question, which is. If there were more leveraging of volunteer help, I know sometimes managing volunteers can be. Counterproductive, time wise or financially, because it can take a lot of money to organize and manage them. But is there a strategy where or um partnering with more groups and getting more volunteers to do some of that lower level work? Would um, impact like the deficit of financial deficit in getting to our goals?
I think, I think probably not. Honestly, the equation probably doesn't, like, return on investment probably isn't quite there. But there's uh, a lot of different reasons to do it other than it to actually take, you know, gains progress. You know, and one of them is that kind of ownership and understanding of the value of this thing to have some hands on and experience with it. Um, and so it's absolutely worth doing from a tree planting standpoint. Um, but the actual act of like getting trees in the ground, there's efficiencies kind of have to take over at that point. Or we won't, yeah, make the progress that we need to make. So we're balancing that. I think that there's so much room for possibility on school campuses. I think is a great location where. You know, volunteerism, education and hands on could really come together. We've got some funding focused on from Oregon Department of Forestry. We just received a grant, assuming it doesn't get yanked away. Um, that does focus on school campuses and that kind of collaboration between families. The school districts, Friends of Trees and REN, um, the um, educational network is going to leave that component of that grant. And so I think, you know, that's, that's where we might make even more strides just by sort of focusing and honing in on those volunteer. Educational opportunities.
Um, my second quick question, sorry about that. Thank you for that answer, by the way. Um, so it sounded like the disaster like mitigation can be pretty impactful on things flowing as they should with the plans and strategies. Um, what's the best case scenario in your perception of how to manage that? Like, it sounds like creating a separate budget for that would help, but is there other components to that as well?
Um, I think that, you know, the fact is that the urban forestry team of skilled arborists is pretty small. And so, you know, when um, work needs to be diverted to these kind of critical immediate needs. That small team goes to that need and then this one is left unmet. And so I think that, you know, there's a lot of strategies that will help us be um, more kind of um nimble. In responding to whatever the needs are. And one of them is utilizing contractors. And we do have some really great contractors that are just an arm and an extension of the team. And building up the depth in the contractor base is something that we're working on going out for another contract. Um, that will hopefully help within our limited resources to keep kind of the focus where we intend it to be.
Yeah.
Um. But unless we have strict kind of pots of money for this purpose and this purpose, it's all going to get kind of moved. To what the most pressing need is of the moment and proactive work kind of always falls.
Yeah.
Lags behind when that's the case.
Yeah, dealing with like the risk and safety aspects, right? Having trees on the right of way. We want to have a, a healthy urban forest and have that give back in all the ways it can. But we get, you know, we have a set amount of funds and we have to strategically use, where are we going to use those funds to make the biggest impact we need? When there's a lot more trees succumbing to, to heat and drought stress and then we have to go in to be responsible for kind of the community and remove those trees. And prioritize that work because of the safety component of it. That pulls away our resource, we have a flex resource to that way and it means we have to divert from somewhere. So we're, we're constantly stressing over planning, how do we make the most responsible choices? Given we're a team of people that have immense value for the resource we're managing and tons of connection to it. So there are hard choices we have to make, but we have to stay within, you know, what we're allowed to do. So then I think making an impact on growing the urban forest, um, there's plenty of work in the right of way and we're able to now really have a lane. Some funding here through the transportation bonds to, to do that. The program wasn't, didn't have dedicated dollars to be planting or mostly this kind of air preservation work. And then emergency response work. Uh, so this is adding that component to above some, some small, relatively small funding. That's a while back, they just start up planting and kind of get invested back in uh at the very entry level. Um, but I think that's where the private property, there is a lot more, right? Seventy two percent of, you know, every, every homeowner can have a choice to plant the tree. Um, within their property. So there's a lot more expansive control that's broad across the community. But I think there's a lot more impact that can be made in that, in that area, especially because a lot of these uh, metrics we're using. Uh, in the climate action goals are very broad. They're just inside the urban growth boundary. So, you know, we can be as responsible as we can with our twenty eight percent of the, the pie. But there's a lot of impact that can be made out there that also affects those metrics immediately.
So those goals that you put forward, was that goals for that twenty eight percent that you control or is it for the entirety of the?
Thirty percent canopy coverage is a, is a system wide goal. So it's, it's beyond just uh what we hold.
Okay.
We have direct impact of that compared to what we do with our, with our land, but it only can go so far.
So folks planting trees on their private property would help get us to that goal.
Right.
I'm not sure if it was Dennis or Councillor Kishin's key first.
Sorry, I've got a couple of things partially on the revenue and another.
You sure?
Part from elsewhere in the report.
Alright, so one of the things I remember reading when I was looking through this was the discussion about some of the neighbors having. Uh, uses that uh, didn't bring themselves to a thirty percent recovery rate. So like farmland, industrial uses, things like that where it's harder to grow the things you're kind of growing your farm. It, it, it's. Um, so when we're talking about the thirty percent coverage, like when you have those areas where you might have a farm where you're not going to get that thirty percent coverage.
Right.
Does that mean that the surrounding neighborhoods, you're going to want to have forty percent coverage to kind of balance that out?
Well, that's definitely the thought process behind the six planning districts. And so, you know, Bethel, while we want to increase canopy coverage there, we're not going to reach thirty percent there because of all these other youth land uses. And so, south part of Eugene is at, you know, sixty percent. And that's going to give us an overall average of thirty percent. So that's why it was like really important to look at each of the characteristics of the districts and decide what we were going to focus on first. Because the needs are very different throughout. So.
And even if there's a large part of an area that is not necessarily, we don't necessarily can get to it. It can be there, neighborhoods and like residential, we would still want.
Yeah.
Right. So South Eugene is so high canopy because there's so much private trees. It's not necessarily, there's still plenty of opportunity in the right of way there. But we're trying to use our resources to help spread that wealth. That's part of the, the whole metrics we're using, right? And some of these areas, there's just tremendous opportunity and not only are there a few right away trees, there are very few private trees. So us really establishing a reinforcement that bright away is the best hope way forward at the moment for that community to experience that.
Dennis?
Yeah, one I want to just lift up, you know, looking at the comparative data that's in the report in terms of, you know, you were very proud that went from eight to nine percent. In Bethel. While I live in Laurhill Valley in my neighborhood, it's fifty eight percent, right? So we look at that inequity that currently exists for a whole variety of reasons, like you said. And I remember when I first moved back to Eugene five years ago, reporting the Register Guard about comparable differences in life expectancy between those neighborhoods. There's an eighteen year difference in life expectancy between Bethel and my neighborhood. Now, trees are one of many, many factors. So one, I just want to lift up the, you know, vital need to do the equity work you're doing and to applaud that. And thank you for that work, you know, um, and affirm that. Um, and to understand what it really means of who we are as a community. I did some door to door work. Um, with Beyond Toxic in that neighborhood and I didn't realize that neighborhood existed in my town. Um, and you know, it's where forty four percent of the Latino community in my town lives in that neighborhood. Where there are no trees. So I walk those streets. So they need more street trees. So thank you affirmation kinds of piece. Now, the other piece is related to some work that um, the commission did almost four years ago. I know because I'm coming to the end of my four year term around heritage trees. Um, and I looked in the report, there's a reference to the code um, about incentives and things on development. And, you know, about preservation of existing trees um, in development. And at that point in time, there were no administrative rules to implement the code that you cite in your report. Have administrative rules been developed around heritage trees definitions? Um, and incentives and perhaps disincentive for, uh, you know, for heritage trees. Because I've got a couple of examples in my immediate neighborhood that I'll discuss further, but are there OARs yet? And what really are the disincentives or incentives if a tree is defined as a heritage tree?
There, I, that, I, I don't know. And we'll get you some information on that. I know that there's like, um, there's diameter. Tree diameter, which is going to help with that, that there's limitations on that.
My interest is very personal. I mean, I can think of two trees that I would consider heritage tree. Five years ago, I built a new house and there's a tree in front of my house that, as I described, it's a big old Doug fir. Second growth probably, but it takes two people to hug that tree, right? Um, and I changed my plan um, to accommodate continuation of that tree. I didn't get any incentives for doing that.
Yeah.
Um, this year, a similar sized tree came down on a piece of property directly across the street. And from informal conversations with the people of. And from informal conversations with the people of development, there was no disincentive for them taking that huge tree out. Um, and there's not only, as you note, the aesthetic issues. Those mature trees, we know. Sequester more carbon. Those mature trees, no doubt, pull more pollution out. So that's, I'm hoping is a priority going forward, that more attention and. Open to what citizens could do to help you folks in that work with council. Um, and we got a counselor in the room about preserving what we've got.
Yes.
Um, because they do the best work.
Absolutely.
Doug firs I know are a questionable issue. I have to water that. They do it here. It's longevity in the current changing climate. And I've treated it for the infestations that have come to Doug firs that are migrating out of the Willamette Valley. But they're here. Um, and so I want to kind of. Lift up the work you've been doing on equity and hope that there's, you know, efforts on that heritage tree size over this way.
Yeah, I think what we can speak to is the right away specifically, right? So I think it's the code clearly defines what a heritage tree is or not. You know, we know what that is in terms of when we have. Ownership over a, a right of way tree, right? And it's something that may impact those development, like you spoke to, new development. So we, we have a team member who reviews all plans. Uh, construction plans that impact the right away. So we have conditions around, you know, setting up fence to preserve the root, the root zone within those areas. Uh, we're out there actively as construction's happening to make sure if roots or branches are impacted by construction. Uh, contractors to developers are responsibly taking action because they're going to affect a public value on asset in that. So we can say, no, like your building, you know, can't be done in that way because it's going to impact the street too much. Um, as a part of that too. We have to manage, you know, we can't just holistically stop development from moving forward, you know, as a minimum spout. We have to hold both those, those things, you know, the need to grow the city and. Allow for development and our, our public to be able to grow um, as well as responsibly managing this, this asset. So. There's a process we work through. There are times when uh, trees, not insignificant trees will be removed as part of development and they're the way to compensate. Uh, an attempt to compensate uh, through a value, through, through praising that tree and there can be significant costs of those trees and those costs identify all those ecosystem service benefits. At the time when Jeff D you took. So that's not a perfect solution, but. Um, within the space that we manage and control, there's, there's a process that goes there and then there's the money that comes back to see ultimately if. If a decision is made to remove a tree. Most of the time, those decisions are around like the current health of the tree and other factors too than just the will of. The manager, for instance, but um, you know, and, and then heritage trees within the private space, that's not managed by our program. So. Uh, that's managed by a different team within the city in terms of like rules around how many trees you could remove or the size of those tree and classification depending on what size property you own.
Kind of take out, as my recollection is you can take three of any size out on a single site.
Depending on your lot size.
Property.
Right.
No limitations, yeah.
And that, those, those decisions have a tremendous impact on these bottom lines we're talking about.
Absolutely.
So.
But I also understand what you highlighted about the efforts it takes to preserve a heritage tree when you are with development. In prior career. I was the director of Moss Creek Children's Center at the university and it surrounds a beautiful old water oak. Um, and there were the kind of mitigation plans you talked about. Um, I remember the call to the contractor of who parked equipment in the tree zone, get it out of here. And when we put in place structures for children, the footings were hand dug and if there was a root, it was going to move over. Um, so it takes careful management, but uh, I'm, I'm just hoping that there are ways. Um, beyond your scope of responsibility to look at heritage trees as an issue of development. Um, cause it's, that's where a lot of the, you know. Long-term impacts from those trees that are already mature. I mean, the reality is a young tree doesn't sequester carbon. It takes carbon. In the first years of its growth. So I'm hoping, I appreciate the efforts you're doing on every tree that you can get control over. So again, I'll end with a thank you.
We've got a couple of minutes left. We'd like to hear from Tom.
Yeah.
But my question is, uh, does your plan incorporate planting a variety of different species?
Yeah. It does. Yeah, so we have, we have a bunch of me- uh, metrics. We have, uh, you know, right tree for right, right place. So when we come into these neighborhoods, one of the things we're looking at, there's, there's a lot of need out there, but not all need is exactly created equal, right? So we have a really small planting spot. We've chosen metrics of species that will be select, that will uh, be successful at that location, right? Cause we don't want to plant a giant oak tree in a planting space this big, right? It's just, it's not going to work out for that tree or the community. So we have a, a large list that, that's on our urban forestry website, over two hundred tree species. Those are species dependent. A lot of them are, are native, but a lot of them need to be more naturalized species from Northern California as the. Temperatures change and drought change, we need to drought, you know, allow our trees to be able to take that stress. So we're. Planning for that and purchasing trees grown in Northern California, having them shipped up or, or grown here locally at different elevations and different. Uh, they can take different amounts of stress. But we have specific lists of trees laid out for depending on with the plant or space, depending if there's overhead power lines. There's a lot of implications to take. We want to be careful not to plant trees around top of water meters or right on top of. Uh, things that are, we know are going to cause conflict over time. So what does that mean for the size of the tree, the species of the tree? What, you know, the soils of Western Dean are different than soils in South Eugene. So we want to select not only trees that fit the space and the size requirement. That also fit the particulars of that site. So our list allows us to make strategic decisions about that and we select and. Grow those trees within our own in-house nursery. We stood up in last year uh, and, and tripled the size of it. Uh, to be able to have a stock to bolster that we possibly make that decision.
And that's a big change from the ninety-two plan for sure, which I read also.
Yeah.
Don't ask. It was like, it was a couple of years ago I read it for another reason.
Yeah.
Um, you needed to get some good sleep.
No, because you guys were asking for response from neighborhood associations. That's when I read it.
Yeah.
Um, and responded. But uh, in, at length. And that's also another thing I like about it too, is that it isn't like a thirty year. Turnover, it's a five-year turnover now, which I think that's going to be great and I'd really like to see that in there. But I know. You asked something, do you want to let Alexi go or do you want to?
Sure, go. Mine's, I got kind of a two-parter. The first part maybe you can answer pretty quickly. It's about the Emerald Dashboard. It's maybe ten-ish years out from here. Um, and I'm wondering, so you've got like. The trees under your control.
Right.
And it, was it nine percent of the?
Full.
Total trees under your control, right? Yeah, so are, is your plan to basically? Handle that as it needs to be handled? If they all die at once, then we're gonna have to deal with that? Are you doing preemptive removals and replacements or both?
Both, all the above right now. So we, we've removed asteries from our planting list.
Right.
Um, we are making management decisions about asteries as, as we see them in decline, you know, knowing that. You know, it's, it's a matter of time before Emerald Dashboard does come to our community and that time isn't known.
Right.
Um, you know.
Yeah, ten years is a while, guys.
Ten years would be great if it waited that long. Um, so, but in that we're. Figuring out how to strategically manage those trees now, both in the, in the right away that we have purview over. Um, in looking at, you know, sidewalk conflicts. If, if, if there's other challenges with that tree that's really pressures on the system, then. You know, we're more prone to remove it, paying on the side. So there are multiple methods to take to preserve those trees as best we can and. Part of that is the financial cost implications on the city, some of that, a lot of that sustainability. Some of that's diversity of having, you know, diverse urban force. So there's a lot of factors to be considered in that.
Hmm, we're still working on our exact approach to that. We're working closely with Oregon Department of Forestry and then every. Organization up in the, you know, the I five corridor is going to be experiencing this if they aren't already. And so. Yeah, there's a lot of strategies to put into place. All of them are expensive.
It's in part of these plant, this planning work we're doing for planting. We're considering ash tree quantities within neighborhoods now, knowing that if all those trees. Have to be removed in the next, whatever timeframe, that we're going to have done our part in establishing the forest growing up alongside that as we remove. So it's a big part, from the statistics, we're tracking those neighbors of how many asteries we have and what size those trees are. So.
I was kind of thinking like, is there a multi-stakeholder collaboration going on to help folks? Apart from that nine percent that's under your control, but so folks know this thing's coming. Here are. Some places only a cottonwood's going to do because it's so freaking wet, right?
Right.
Some places, forgive me, um, some places, you maybe you're up in the hill and you have a lot more choice of what could potentially replace that. And people, is there, I'm thinking like a, a multi-stakeholder. Um, public-private partnership could be really impactful for the private canopy.
Yeah, we're in Department of Forestry is kind of leading that charge. Uh, they're working very closely with the communities around the Portland area, which are experiencing. Emerald Dashboard right now and developing plans. Portland has recently developed a plan for how they're going to, you know, what choices they're going to make and how they're going to make them. Uh, once trees along the local area have, have been found to be infested with this beetle, which is here now locally. And will be making its way down here. Um, so it's a multi-vibration. I've done some interviews on the news about it. Uh, we talked to the public about it. A lot of what we point them to is kind of ODS website because they're tracking all this information around where it is currently.
Right.
What steps they recommend. So, you know, we're not actively out there telling people like, kind of asteries, three move asteries. Um, but I think we need to be mindful of, of how asteries are doing healthy and, and they're going to have a big impact too on natural areas, right? There's a lot of actually along the stream, so a lot of stream bank shading is going to be affected. Uh, there's a lot of ecosystem effects from that. Part of that is what we hold in urban forestry, but it's much broader than that.
Great. We can do like two more. So you want to go and then John?
Yeah, I'm kind of following up on a couple of things. Um, first I wanted to say congratulations on getting the plan to this point because yes, I was involved with that committee. I guess it's four years ago now. Uh, when, when we were talking with the staff, they were saying, well, what we really need to do is to revise our urban forestry plan and it's been a long time and it really needs done. So congratulations on getting it to this place. And. Similarly, I was going to ask about the concept of heritage trees and how we are with that and. Cause I think if I recall, the, the advice of the staff at that point was let's, we'll see, when we get to revise the plan, we'll see what kinds of issues or protections we can put in. For that. And so this seems to be exclusively focused on our public lands and I. Assume that you keep a good eye on the heritage trees on our land that we, you know, saving what we can. So I don't know if there are anything we can perhaps look to in the future, working on that could, could help in our relationship with. Private properties, like we're saying incentives or disincentives or other things that we can do. I don't know if those goals, you say the goals. Are really our city, community-wide goals, even though we, I don't know if you think we can achieve those goals, the thirty percent just focused on our own. Public land or so, so we have to, we have to find a way to, you know, to advance those goals throughout the rest of the community. And that'd be something I think that this commission would be glad to help with.
Yeah.
That would be great. Cause we have a fairly small staff size, so we're very focused on making responsible decisions and adapting to the emergent needs. Um, so it's hard to really focus on anything but dedicate time for prolonged period of time on any one issue because. We have a lot to, to make an impact on. So. Is it okay for homeowners to plant in the right of way strip? And will you tell them if they can plant if they want to? Uh, it is okay provided they reach out to our program, get a permit to plant. So yeah, absolutely. We would. Uh, take a look at their area. We'll send them a permit to plant. We'll send them a list of trees that apply to their area. We'll give a recommendation for that. We'll have all the specifications for that and we can meet on site and collaborate on that as well. So. Yes, absolutely. They can. There's a process to, to go through that. That's, it's a free permit. So we're trying to make it.
Alrighty. Think, so we're just a little bit over time and you want to discuss, I imagine, because there's a lot of.
Yeah.
Private property talk going on around.
I know, it's a big, it is, it is a big piece of the evaluation. And we talked to, about. Small piece. A, a small piece we have direct control over and some funding pathways towards like, you know. It, we can get our own house in order and that will be a big important step forward. But in the meantime, it's important not to lose. Mature, healthy trees where we can.
Newer before your program was stood up to, you know, deal with risk and help sustain those trees, but you know, we're, we're preventing the funding on a large scale to really reestablish the urban forests. You know, when a stop sign gets hit by a, a car, we put that stop sign up because we understand the impact it'll be if we don't manage that. So. I think part of the next wave of, of opportunity is really for facing that with the, the city's uh, teams. So. Great opportunity there.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. It's really hard to say all this quickly, like it's a lot. It's a big, it's a big. Like, and any, I mean, I think that is an awesome advocacy for this mission is to be thinking about.
The, is that street fund? The, the slides that you did on the street fund are not connected with your presentation that you gave to council, right?
Correct.
So is there a way to get those or find, place to find those?
Yeah, we can, yeah.
The slides that you.
Yeah.
I can forward them out as PDF. I just sort of have one. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Shout out on the, the eighteenth street tree planting.
Yeah.
Yeah, if anyone hasn't tried yet, driven yet from Bertelson all the way to. What, Chamber?
The whole stretch, yeah.
Oh, really?
Three hundred and fifty trees and over the last two years we've put them on the street, so.
Yeah, it's awesome.
It's a part of trying to prepare some materials that would have.
Thank you. Bye, thank you.
Alrighty. So now in our new exciting format, we are going to um, have until, if we need to go over. Past seven, we, we could potentially, but the goal is maybe to catch up and maybe go to seven with our discussion depending on. How it goes and what you guys want to do. Um. So, I'm like hovering over your. Did you want, did you have one?
Oh, no, I don't put my gun in the turn.
Me try. So how can we incentivize people to plant trees on private property boats? Tree exchange?
And save.
I think one of the big issues in my neighborhood, specifically in southeast, is how do we keep people from cutting them all down?
Yeah.
I have more issue. I mean, I planted probably over forty trees in my property since I bought it in four years. Um, but what I see is people cutting trees. I. It's, it's beyond not planting. It's, it's cutting and that's because of the ordinance. I mean, it's really, to Dennis's point, it's. It's really archaic and it's, it's not, if you went and read the ordinance, you'd be like, this is it. This is what Eugene's tree ordinance on private property is. You'd be like. There's like no rules. It's like wild west town. I mean, it's really pretty much. You can kind of do whatever you want, especially if there's a house on your property.
So, one thing that first came to mind when you said that is surveying property, the. Homeowners about why they're cutting their trees down, could do an educational campaign on. This situation to help with that decision-making. Um, can you, okay, I am very ignorant about trees, but like, can you extract a tree of a certain size and retain it? To be used somewhere else or is it just got to be chopped down?
Looking at John.
No, six feet.
Six feet.
Yeah. Little trees.
Okay, I mean, you can. It's not hard to do it here in, in the hills and different places, but I mean, there are people that will sell their trees. Like at large size, not for lumber, but like.
To replant.
Right, to people that want a really big and mature tree, but to your point, it's hard work and you have to take a lot of soil.
It's a very expensive.
It's crazy expensive. It's more like in the Midwest, it happens a lot where it's sort of. Flat and you can sell a tree. Um, of certain size. But like here, it's, I don't know. People don't have as deep a pockets either.
Well, it's like somewhat expensive to remove a tree, right?
Yes.
So maybe there's a, maybe there's like a tax credit or, I don't know, there's something to. That cost, I don't know. I don't know a lot. I'm just brainstorming ideas here just willy-nilly, but. Um, so people are cutting down too many trees and not replanting them.
That's my, in my neighborhood, my anecdotal experience in the area where I walk all the time. I, I'm shocked at how many people buy a house.
Mm-hmm.
I know some of them, they come from out of state. I'm going to generalize, but it's true. And they, they have, they're afraid of having trees next to their house. They're afraid of. Fire. They don't like the shade. They want more sun and.
And those staying messy.
Messy, oh, they're messy and um, the neighbor across the street from me, they built a. A greenhouse on a, like a four percent slope grade. It's like totally ridiculous, like. The whole, I mean, forty percent, I mean, like, it's just totally crazy, like, like why they do, people are doing what they're doing. They do, people are doing what they're doing.
Well, picking the safe zone around your house is a real thing.
Yeah.
People get that advice that you really.
True, but it's also like if you cut them all down, you dry out.
Right. Oh, I'm just saying, I, yeah.
But right, it's an, to to me just points an education situation, because I know a lot of people do. They wanna cut all the trees down because trees are dangerous and then they. Reduce all, they get rid of all the shade on their property and the soil moisture just. Goes right out and then now you have a fire situation.
Right.
You know, and just, you know, somewhere in the report, that was a reference around revenue issues that there were fees. For cutting trees as a cost of development and that revenue was targeted. Toward planting replacement trees in public spaces. It becomes a revenue area. And kudos to the council for looking at some really creative revenue sources around fire fee in particular. We are at a time where we need. Creative revenue sources, you know, and costs of development. That could be reinvested in sustainability are one possible thing to be looked at. So that I found a reference to that in somewhere in the weeds of that report. Uh, you know, I didn't.
Right.
I didn't get an incentive to leave that tree.
Right.
And people across the road didn't pay a fee for taking it down either.
And that was on public or private?
Privately.
That was private. Yeah, it's.
And an educational campaign would make sense because like we have. A very big tree at our house on Fox Hollow and my husband was just scared of it, like, because after that ice storm. A couple of years ago. You know, dropping big branches that's hanging right over our driveway. So we had to pay someone to come out and assess it and cut it down. So if you're thinking through the process of like, what are the barriers to? Like, where are the points of ignorance that are gonna lead to cutting down a perfectly fine tree, educating around those points? Uh, making it easier to learn. Yeah, just thinking through some of the ways people go about doing this, but starting with why are people cutting them down?
If you haven't had your insurance company come and tell you yet, you cannot have branches over your house. I've had to change insurance companies three times and they'll come and find it in another year. They'll come out. You have branches over your house and my rental, same thing. No branches over the house.
I'm glad they haven't come to our house.
I can't believe.
Probably the drone pitcher is that it's in two D. So the the branch should be forty feet above the house and off to the side. But the drone makes it look like it's on it and then you get a letter saying you need to cut this or you lose your insurance.
Exactly.
So, so one thing Danielle and I talked about, because I know this is. Even though we just had a presentation about public trees, I think what kind of resonated with everyone is the seventy-two percent. Is on private land and they need that for their goals. So I think.
And that they're really adequately addressing with on public land. It feels like they're doing pretty much everything they can, so.
The plan is solid and well-written.
Yeah. So, so. What we were talking about is like, yeah, this is, this is like work plan twenty-five, twenty-six fodder. I think, I think that would be, I mean, I'm all for that. It's near, very near and dear to my heart and I know Danielle likes it too. But like how we could, how can we, I mean, it's a big deal because it's ordinance.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what changes the game. And ordinance is not easy to change. Right? So we have to think about. Things like Mitra's saying, okay, but we could do an education campaign and we could make recommendations. Um, to council. If if it's part of a work plan, I'm just like looking forward and we can't make any decisions about that right now, but it is something we could think about and if. The commissioners that are around for that. Um. Yeah, we can, we can re, we can revisit that in a couple months.
Well, I think I just wanna say a couple things because I see a. A few different potential pathways forward for the Sustainability Commission here, given the interest. On private, you know, that that seventy-two percent. Um, one is. Like Devin said, um. Adding this to the work plan next year and focusing on the ordinance and having staff from the division that enforces that ordinance. Come and speak and hear like, what is the ordinance? What type of enforcement do they do? What, what? You know, what's this timeline for updating this ordinance? Um, another, so that could be one potential pathway. I think another potential pathway that would demonstrate. Um, potentially to council that um, you're tracking what's coming before them, you know, this. Urban Forestry Management Plan is about to be going to council in April. So Urban Forestry is gonna be, you know, it's sort of been on their docket and. Um, to me, that seems like that's an opportunity for the commission to send a letter. You know, supporting the Urban Forestry Management Plan and may maybe just indicating in that letter where you see a gap. In that plan and you could either just like highlight that for council or um. It, you know, uh. Say that we plan to dive into this more in our plan next year or I think for staff to. To change the ordinance, they need to be directed by council or the city manager to do that. So you could kind of urge that. To happen. So I think there's, there's just an opportunity since this is gonna be coming before council in the near future to sort of align. With that, with.
What's the date?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just, I remember it's an April day, but I don't, which means it would need to happen in time for it to be an action item. For the commission's March meeting.
Yeah, yeah, it would probably need to be, yeah, this would, letter would need to happen fairly quickly. And I mean, if you really wanna get in front of council with it, um. It seems like the best way to do that is like have the write, write a letter, you know, we can send that as a memo, but you can also go to a public hearing and as a commissioner, you get. Put at the front of the public hearing agenda and you know, then that's two ways the council hears it and. I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I'm curious if what you think of like the how could, what could be the best way to raise this? Sort of gap to council or or what?
I think one of the things that would be, you know, I think public comment, I think writing the letter, having those conversations as part of the work plan is Paul's sort of a piece of that. I think one element that's gonna be important in that conversation. Is distinguishing between trees that are being removed because of development. Um, trees that are being removed because people don't like trees, like I guess some of your neighbors don't like trees. Um, and trees that are being removed because there's a perceived safety hazard. Cause I think some of the pushback I've heard in the previous discussions that have come for trees, which. About trees and trees in the code and tree removal and what you can plant and all that sort of pieces. Is, you know, we have a a pretty severe housing shortage.
Yeah.
And so there's a lot of tension between. What are the barriers that are making it expensive for people to build housing versus what are the the regulations that we're putting in place to try and do other things that we value? And so, you know, if you're looking at it from a perspective of, well, are people, like, like. Clearing out some of those sort of points of where there could be contention. And maybe focusing on some of those specific areas. Cause I do think, you know, there's a difference between someone removing a tree because it's sick. There's a difference between someone removing a tree because their insurance company has told them they have to cut it down or they're gonna cancel their insurance. Um, not everyone's going to switch insurance every three years or every year apparently. Um. And someone just removing a tree because aesthetically they would prefer not to have a tree. And so I think kind of breaking out, I'm thinking a little bit about how those different scenarios might.
Well, that stuff is, I mean, if you look at other ordinances in other cities. You know, Portland, for example, is, I mean, that's is broken down. It's it's part of what happens, you know, as far as, so that was, it just makes it hard. For you to do the wrong thing.
Yeah.
Um, but also I think it's important to remember like, is that really happening in in Eugene? To the extent of, are the tree, are trees actually a barrier to where housing is being built? You know what I mean? I mean, we can say that and be concerned and yeah, there are stakeholders, but is that really? A barrier in in Eugene, like where the trees are, where housing is being developed? Is that really something that we are dealing with?
So it seems like, at least for the purpose of the letter. We could, we could at least, we could acknowledge that there are complexities that need to be addressed. You know, that there, you know, sometimes of course things have to be removed. But when we would look into that as part of our process and then I think talking with the staff and looking at other examples, see how that's addressed in other places.
When we looked at it before, there was some discussion in the committee that was looking at the issue about making it a standard, not unlike. Stormwater management. Um, and that urban canopy management might be a management issue that's part of the developmental process. You know, I didn't get any incentives for preserving the tree, but you better make sure that my bioswale met standards to. As a stormwater treatment facility. Um, because in my particular location, I couldn't do an overflow into an existing stormwater. Um, there are provisions that are limiting. For the public good. I mean, I need to make sure that the water coming off my roof doesn't impact my downslope neighbors. Um, my tree removal has an impact to the larger community.
Absolutely.
And I think if it was framed that way that we, you know, that if we do send a letter that we hope. Um, you know, there's a growing recognition. Um, partially coming from the urban um, forestry plan. About the public value of trees and that development would take it into consideration. In a manner perhaps similar to stormwater management.
Chris?
This, I don't know, it's kind of a thought question for people that. So when they talk about justice and equity and the the map that they showed was a little stark between. Southwest, southeast and then Bethel and Santa Clara. Like literally like night and day. And then I wonder a bit. If if you're trying to build more, you know, middle-type. Communities, right, which are, which is good, but some of the ones I've seen that are built in the Bethel area, for example. I think they're shoved in there so tight. It's it, whatever trees they planted, they're not gonna survive because there's, there's no, it's it's just cement, like there's no. I mean, there's no yards, there's no, and so I wonder a little bit with, you know, what we're looking at too is, is. It's the most underserved area for trees. It's an underserved area economically. But then some of the ways that we're trying to to build the neighborhoods, is it counterproductive in trying to meet that very same goal? I wonder, just having driven through those neighborhoods.
I mean, if you look at. What went down with, I mean, I don't, I do and I don't wanna bring this up, but with House Bill two thousand one and then what? How? The the revisions that council at that time, which you weren't on there, um. Chose to do and I was kind of actively involved with that in the Neighborhood Association on some level. Um. I didn't always agree with everyone in there, but there, I mean, they, the boundaries were very close to the edge of the properties. And that was part of the revision was like maximum use of. Um, of the lots. In in kind of a shocking way that went beyond um, what HB two thousand one specified. It was like more. Um, and.
That's what was done here locally.
Yeah, but now it's all, I don't know, I honestly, where where it is right now, like. Where it is right now? Isn't it, did, because the revisions were challenged or?
By middle housing?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh.
They're remanaged.
Middle Housing uh, Council, before I got on there, re-repassed same set of code. It's being challenged again, but. My, my impression is, is that the specific concerns, which were not about setbacks or anything like that.
No, I'm very familiar. That's why I was like, I don't know if I wanna bring this up or not.
And, um, and you know, I'll, I'll kind of follow up with that a little bit, that like, you know, there's, there's pros and cons to. Denser development, like if you look at like downtown, for example. Um, you know, there the lot sizes there are not that you can plant a lot of trees. And so then you're thinking about different ways and different environments. I think he brought that up of. You know, how do you, how do you kind of balance that?
And that's kind of what I was meaning too, is like, where are we building the more dense? Structures, we're not building them in southeast up in the hills.
No.
Right where all the trees are. So it's kind of like one of those. Are we removing trees to build these? I, you know, is that an issue? Like that we need to really focus on, even though there's a lot of stakeholders and yes, it's an issue we should consider. That theoretically we should consider, but is that really our issue? With where things are being built and where the trees are.
Yeah.
And then Ian will comment back behind Devin, which he can't see.
I just raised my hand. So a a thought for the commission to consider if if you did want to proceed with the letter is. You know, in instead of being, not saying you're doing this, but instead of being prescriptive of saying do this or do that, do what Portland did. Maybe lean into values and, you know, we, we have goals. It's part of the cap. We recognize that seventy percent of our land is on private development. We have the following values that we'd like to see represented as we think about developments, including. Whatever it might be. I think we framed it that way. That might land in a slightly different way with council. Than something that's saying you do a form of data or do this or something like, I think. A- as we learned today, there's a lot of complexity here. And I know that some of our colleagues are wrestling with this right now and think about what they can do, what's kind of available to them, scriptively. What council might wanna do. And I think that's a place where I think the commission can look forth. You know, we, we, we have these values that we think are important as a community and ways in which those can be addressed. Through preservation of trees, through development, through all the competing goals of the how I think might be an effective way to think about how to frame a light up gift council. Thanks, Ian.
So do we wanna do a letter?
I think we do. This kind of process of moving towards it.
Mm-hmm.
So who wants to write? I was just looking, because you knew what I was gonna ask.
I can do, we wanna do a smaller little working group. And you're very interested and I'm interested when we're in the room.
I don't know if we can do that.
He's pretty good at cranking stuff.
I think if your deadline is March meeting. Yeah, I'm, I, my place too full to.
No, okay.
Uh, steer heading, but steer head or like supportive that, but I think staff would be happy to review it.
He's darn good writer.
I was actually gonna update something, mention some updates to things that are already written. I I I think it would be ideal if we could. Get something drafted soon circulated by email among the committee. And folks have reviewed it by the time we're here in a month so that it can be. Uh, out and like.
Well, it has to be, it has to go forward two weeks before if we're gonna put it on the agenda. So we have a couple of weeks to get a letter.
Like two pages, right? We don't wanna write.
No, it's it's that, it may be one page, right?
Right. I'm not volunteering to write it.
No, I thought you were.
It could be.
No, I was trying to get him to volunteer to write it. He's saying, no, I I hear.
Cleaning live one or two.
Yes.
That one's actually just, just finished and ready to to go out.
Yeah.
So I had a short timer newcomer question. I thought we weren't supposed to be doing things that the council wasn't doing. So we're telling the council, look at private tree preservation now. Yeah, I mean, I'm just confused about this.
I, I would say that, like, if if the council just got like a random letter one day of like, trees. Um, that would be a little bit different, but if it's going in conjunction with council reviewing the urban forestry plan.
Yeah.
It's, it's feedback on the urban forestry.
It's a good T-Jack.
Training that staff came presented to us. They told us about the following. One of the things that came up in this presentation was the reality that seventy-two percent of our forest is on private. I'm not writing. And I never remember stuff after I say it.
It's reported.
Yeah, no, I think it's a, it's a good question. I appreciate your reasoning. Um, I think we're not, yes, I think we're not trying to have just things completely.
Absolutely. It it's just, it's like a s- a sneaky opportunity to sort of.
Exactly.
But also support the plan.
First piece, like Ian was saying, we got, we heard from Urban Forest about this plan. It's a pretty good plan and the public right-of-way trees we have. But I, I, I at least using, I say, I'm pretty confident that they're doing a good job and we're set up to continue doing a pretty good job.
Do that in a letter.
Right, and so that's the first pair.
Yeah.
This, the part that the city has direct control over seems to be going reasonably well and is well planned. The seventy-two percent that we don't, the city doesn't have direct control over is where the rest of this letter is going.
Yeah.
Here's some options and.
All right, I'll raise the red flag.
Is it relevant to?
I'll help.
The ordinance or whatever the ball, getting the ball flying and reflecting on the ordinance, like regarding private trees?
You could, you could reference, it's like administrative rule. Six point Rio five and nine point six eight eight. I mean, yeah, I think it'd be good to reference, you know, these are the existing regulations.
Yeah.
Um, that's not in the packet. Um, but I did.
See something in the report, fifty-five, I think in the report.
Oh, is it? Um, I could, I could forward this. Well, I don't know if you guys wanna see this now. This is sort of a memo that we sent to city council last year when we um, presented the climate action plan.
Presented the climate action plan, there were some specific questions that came out of city council, like what is existing tree ordinance code and. So we had written back a memo to city council where we kind of summarized that ordinance. If if you guys want to take a look at that, I can. Um, I've got like seven copies, yeah.
I don't want the paper one.
Okay, but I'll email it. I'll just pass a few around, um. So. You guys want one? I don't have any. They gave them all away.
Well, if you're gonna write, I'll already get and hand it to you.
Do you want to pull it up on the? That way, but it's in the captured in the recording itself. I was gonna include this in the packet, then I didn't want to this to hijack like their presentation, because it's kind of a separate thing, but it would be good to reference.
Yeah, five significant trees, I mean, that's only if you're over twenty thousand square.
Well, that's that's the thing.
Way smaller than, way bigger than most lots.
Is there separate tree regulations in the land use?
I have no idea, I'm not sure. Yeah, I mean, I think this is. It's the building, building permit services division that like holds this. These regulations and enforces it, so there's that would be.
It's a two part code, and so the private's in the six hundreds and then the public's in the nineties.
Okay, so it's the public.
And I mean, there's interesting things to look. To like the difference between a tax lot and a difference between and private property and a. A lot that has a home, an existing home on it already. So that are very strange and kind of counterintuitive, like you can. Cut anything you want essentially on a. Lot that has a house on, I mean, you've read it, but on a tax lot, then there's all these rules where you can't cut the trees down on the tax lot, but if your house is already on it. You can do whatever you want, it's very. It's confusing and and I I was surprised to read it all when I did. I need to read it again, but. As I was trying to report my neighbor. Reading through it, combing through the code. Very strange, yeah, and then there's CCNRs in some places too that are hard to to pinpoint.
Additionally to this letter, should we think about? Setting up a potential committee next year focusing on this in terms of like. The private, private property suggestions and educational campaign or survey or something.
I think that would be a good conversation to have at the retreat, I think, um, you know, and and look back at what, like, there was a committee that this commission set up. Three or four years ago, they did a lot of that research. I so, and since council isn't directing staff to like open up this code again. I don't know if that would be the best use of the commission's time, but. You know, you'd be repeating work that has already been done and. I would, what end if it hasn't been directed, but I think that would be a good conversation to have at the retreat.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's more focused on the educational like positioning of our, like, we have this education and outreach.
That's true.
Portion now. Where we are going out to the community and educating them about like. Sustainability and that seems like it should, something should be in there in that in that slide deck or that presentation. Yeah, the intercept ser- surveys and. And then using that data to like. Create educational resources to. Use in our slide deck when we're talking to the community.
And there's been some discussion about education in the um landscaping committee. The climate friendly landscaping group as well, I mean, the focus, you know, this point has been on turf issues. Um, but there was some discussion in terms of how to share recommendations to private landowners. And I think that's exactly what you.
I mean, because we are set, we are like a liaison between the. The city council and the community and. Educating back, yeah, or maybe we can, I mean, there are local groups doing this already, obviously, but. Friends of Trees and some of the. Contractors they mentioned, but.
I think there's an opportunity here. Cool, alright. So if someone is gonna write a letter. The deadline is two weeks before the next meeting, so I think. March fifth. All my notes just got so messy. Alright. You can do this, like Alexi's gonna have it done. Alright, so we're a little behind, but um now it is time for, um, and thank you guys for that discussion. Liking this format, think about whether or not you like it, and we can talk about that um at the retreat. Committee updates. Can I just preface this conversation, um, because I've I've been involved in a little bit of all the committees and I know all of them are. Getting to that point where they have stuff that they want to bring to the commission for approval. So I just want to sort of reiterate what the process is there. Um, for how to get. Get that vote of approval, so um the committee. Develops the item, it can be a memo for council, it can be a recommendation to council, it can be a public facing handout. Social media toolkit, like there's a number of things that the different committees are creating right now, the item needs to be about ninety five percent complete, like. It needs to be almost completely there. What for it to come out of the committee, then it goes to staff. Chair and vice chair for review. No later than two weeks before that meeting that you want approval for, ideally more, so if if. You're needing like graphics, you know, treatment, if it's gonna need major, you know, if you anticipate staff kind or vice chair chair. Like ideally more than two weeks, if possible. Um, and then it will be included in the packet for the commission to review um one week before. So I need it one week before the meeting. And then it'll come to the commission. For the vote, it'll either get approved, rejected, or revised, um, you know, need revision. If it needs major revisions, then it needs to go back through that whole process. Okay, so that's according to the bio laws, I I know it's. I feel you, um, it takes a while to get this through, so. Uh, just be thinking about that, and I know there's a tendency like as we especially start getting closer to June, the end of the fiscal year to like. Shove things through quicker, but um please just like for staff sanity, just try to honor that process.
Well, it it's also no surprise, it's right, that you don't want to be, you know, having surprises in evening, and it's also just. We're probably being, be transparent about everything this commission.
Report from that committee first. Yeah, Clinton Reliable Backup Energy has uh met a few times, we've been having monthly meetings. And have two documents, one has gone to staff, we have one public facing. Like a fact sheet kind of thing for residents of Eugene about. Lean and reliable backup energy systems, what can you put in your home, what does it do? Um, that's a two pager, it's with staff, so I don't know if you've. Got any updates on the staff side, but it's out there, it's it's like I've been the ether for as far as I'm concerned. Um, and then we have an informative memo to council. Which is three pages long and is now fully drafted and uh. As far as I know, unless my fellow committee members, uh. Unless somebody says no, no, stop, I think it's also ready to go to you, so my hope is that. Um, both of those two things can be ready for approval next month.
Okay, are you guys still wanting to hear from E web? For that policy memo part, I know there was that thought at the end of the committee meeting of having E web come speak. To share a little bit about what they're doing with resiliency.
It wouldn't hurt. Uh, it might also be resolvable with a phone call to the right person relatively quickly. I'm just not sure who the right person is, so if we, if someone knows the name, I'll just call them and see if we can fold in findings from. Okay, conversation ended this. Someone who that is.
Yeah, I can put you in touch with the person, because I was, I was lining that person up to come speak to the committee, so if you want me to do that, I can. But if you'd rather just.
I think we're really close on the, on the policy. Rec- not, it's not really a policy recommendations memo, it's an informative memo to council. Um, it just has policy examples and some potential pathways and it says like, these are. Simple, short things, it's not exhaustive, here's some ideas. So I could run that.
I mean, it might be cool to still hear from you about that as a com- as a commit or. Just a committee, right? Okay, but as long as I'm holding up our, yeah, our our production of these.
Yeah, and I don't want to like. Take over the process and make it secret, I just want to get it done.
Secret, you will, okay. Awesome, yeah, that committee's been great.
Um, Education Outreach Committee uh met just this week and uh. Um, we discussed continuation of the really good work that was done last year. On this powerful PowerPoint that not very many people seem very interested in. We've got a couple of schedules we're trying to pin down for spring dates with neighborhood associations. But only two associations have responded and I've reached out to every one of them. Um, and but there is interest in tabling, in addition to the folks that we did last year, we've already got an invitation from Bethel. Um, so we'll be moving forward on scheduling that, those pieces. Um, and uh, then we had a really, really good discussion about other media and beginning to explore and we. Thanks to Lily Beez like as almost as efficient as this guy is. Yeah, we're probably about seventy five percent, um, you know, ish. For a proposal for beginning a social media um campaign. Um, that would be starting out at cities that a Facebook page and uh. Um, ex-posting areas, um, increasing awareness through those media about the commission. Um, part of that would be a proposal for something that would come forward every. Just before every commission, that would go meaning to go out publicly, so the members of the public know what in fact we're talking about. And also we're playing with an element of a different commissioner would introduce those topics. Each month so that there's sort of a, this is your commission part of that as well. Um, and so we're confident that that would be ready to be shared um in a timely fashion the next meeting. And we must, is that where we're at right now, you know?
I just feel like. I think it's kind of exciting because. Uh, from, I I've only been on the commission for around a year, right, but what we're trying to do is just. Gather more interest, you know, it's like. I mean, picture like a post that's like you have a commission's face right there and a. Message from them about the next month's meeting and then an agenda summary, so that way. The public, whoever's following, the city's social media can see. Oh, like this commission exists and we are meeting every month and we do like interact with these. Uh, things that have to do with like the public and public interest. So, yeah.
And that there's an opportunity for people to. Either listen to meaning, comment, so on, get involved, so that, you know, we talked about what is, what are our ma- our major goals, but the whole. Education and outreach effort and those are, that's what it was, it's like let people know that we exist, that we're here and here's what we do and that it's available to them as. As a way to communicate with the city about these topics and what I would be putting a little bit of a personal. Angle on it, so it was, it was a fun discussion, it was. Super helpful to him, really there. Created in real time as we were talking, but so, yeah, it's very good.
Just real quick, um, what are the social media options, is there something? Better than Facebook or is?
City has Facebook and X and X accounts, right?
And Instagram.
They do.
Does city have an Instagram?
They would probably cross post, I don't know, I would think.
Right, I was just curious what was actually available.
Whether they're good or not, we're all just limited to what the. Yeah.
Alright.
Oh, I was just gonna say, um, I did send you that. Application, so we do have that birthday event coming up. On April thirteenth and we're currently receiving applications for participation, I would love. I sent it to Jan. Just because you had sent me your email through via text, but.
I will send it out to them. And um. Yeah, I think we should think about that, when we, when you're saying maybe we have a city spin the wheel, we've got to come up with some.
It's only a four hour event, it's on a Sunday afternoon, so it's. But it's really, we're really trying to bring everyone related to sustainability and we're doing work in that space. Under one roof for this event, so it's a one stop shop for community come and learn.
So the thing I want to remember, what I wanted to add is that. It's important to have other commissioners help cover these. Tabling events when we get to the summer, we get quite a few and, you know, some of these other events, it's it's really helpful. Doesn't all end on the same tour, it's really difficult to do all the events. And also in terms of recruiting groups that would, that may be good places for us to go. And have a little bit more in-depth conversation, if you have ideas about that, if you are. Uh, live in one of the neighborhoods that we don't have booked right now, which is just the whatever, Southeast neighbors.
And Laurel Hill are the only.
So if you live in other, any other parts of the city and you could directly contact your neighborhood association, they might be more.
And I'm in Laurel Hill, those are the two.
I'm sorry, I don't like to interrupt, I'm really bad at interrupting, so like. I make motion to extend the meeting to seven thirty, ten minutes, nine minutes. Sure, on paper? Alright, alright, we have till seven thirty, so we have one more. Committee update, maybe, or not?
Yes.
Laura, is Laura gonna do it or?
I'm sure I can do it, uh, or Jan, do you want to, since you're in person? But I'm happy to if you.
Go ahead, I'm like, my mind has.
We're kind of similar to the Lex update Alexi got gave, but we're a little bit behind, so we missed our last meeting due to a few logistical. Things happening, um, so. We are not quite finished with. Um, yeah, there was several things going on that day, um, but we have two documents that are drafted and. I guess the main thing to note is that we have been researching different ordinances, um, looking around. Both artificial turf and then gas powered leaf blowers. And gas powered leaf blowers, we're leaning towards just com- doing what other places in Oregon have done. And then artificial turf, we've researched the different ways communities across the country have engaged with that. Because Oregon hasn't yet, there's no communities that we know of, um, and so looking at some communities have banned it, some have done moratoriums. Some have done ingredient specific prohibitions. And we felt like a moratorium was the best way to go, like in our recommendation to council, because it. Uh, stops. New installations for a set period of time, which will kind of stop harm from being done, but then it also gives the industry time to mature. And address the current issues with the material, so that's kind of where we're going and you'll see that when we bring our finished. Product, hopefully next time.
And uh, from what I recall and just looking at it right now, it looks like. The leaf blower informational and informative memo to council and the turf informative memo to council, those both look. Are those completed or like ninety percent drafts, the leaf blowers looks pretty clean, I don't know as much about the turf.
Yeah, we just didn't, since we didn't meet, we couldn't as a committee say that they're completed, so.
Now the other piece in the weeds is that the state is considering. An overall leaf blower. Um, umbrella policy. And it would be nice to maybe just be part of that instead of another. Of the seven communities.
Alright, so quickly, do you wanna, well, do you have any updates from council?
We, we have been talking a lot about money. And so, uh, that's been, that's been a lot of the conversations, there has been a little bit about uh pedestrian. Improvements along, um. Uh, Broadway. Um, between downtown and campus, we talked about that today, that would include things like street trees, so um, that's a nice. A piece in like some other conversations about stormwater, but again, a lot of it's been about money, so.
I can see why. Um, yeah, so I don't have too many updates, other than I just want to generate questions for March's presentation. So March, next month, um. Planning is coming, they're gonna talk about, um. They're currently creating a new chapter in the comprehensive plan, Mission Eugene Comprehensive Plan, that's the sort of the guiding policy document for land use. So they're creating a new chapter on compact development and um, they'll be. So they're creating a new chapter on compact development and um, they'll be sharing sort of that new chapter. Um, and just to give you a little bit of background, like the comprehensive plan, it's meant to be aspirational. It's these high level. Um, goals setting. And then once that, that sort of lays the foundation for other tools to follow later that can like help implement those goals, so. Um, that's a little bit of what they'll be talking about. They'll also be doing a focus on what some of those tools are, separate from the comprehensive plan. What some of those tools are that can support compact development such as MUPD. So um, for those of you who don't know what MUPD is, MUPD is um. It's a tax exemption that goes to developers who achieve a certain density of housing. So like if a developer within a certain neighborhood builds a large apartment complex and achieves, you know, that density of housing. Um, they can get a ten-year property tax exempt.
Forget what the, what the P is, but the MU is multiple.
Multi-unit.
Multi-unit property taxes.
Yeah, so, um. Yeah, there's sort of been, you know, two sides to that point of, of that helping us achieve our housing goals. Um, helping us achieve our climate goals by incentivizing more compact development. And then the flip side of that is I think there's commu, there's community. Opinion on all sides of what the requirements ought to be in order to get that incentive. Should there be stronger requirements? Should there be less requirements? So that's sort of a little bit of what um, the public has been saying, so. Do you guys have any questions that I can relay to staff?
And I'll just insert a little update in here. The commission um, had a position which I've been serving. I'm gonna spend intermittent for a variety of scheduling conflicts on a group called ETAC, the Envision Eugene Technical Advisory Committee. That basically reviews and advises that staff on what, on the final drafts of the comprehensive plan. They get the data and as they describe it, if a layperson read this, would it make sense? Well, I've been the token layperson in the room a few times. And tried to emphasize in a few places where it seemed to most directly impact cap two point oh goals. So um, I'm gonna listen closely to your questions because I have a meeting with that group tomorrow. Um, and then their staff will be showing up next month here. Um, and just, you know, looking ahead for folks that are interested in this kind of issue. Uh, my term is over the end of June. There will be another opportunity for a commissioner to serve. It's one of the few situations where there's a designated slot. For a member of the sustainability commission and the planning commission to meet with their staff in that envision Eugene technical advisory role. So.
We've got two minutes.
Questions about this thing.
So we did have some public comments a few meetings back when people, when they were talking about the enhanced MUPD program, right? With feedback about um, that we should require from people getting MUPDs. Um, some assurance that they were meeting climate, you know, energy conservation goals and so on, so I think. Asking about that would help.
Okay.
Uh, monkey question that I would have, you can wear it better than I can, but I'd. I'd be interested in what the actual percentage, I'm only looking for two numbers, of actual, I would say, housing for adults. That, that's using that as opposed to student housing.
Yeah, that's been part of the discussion in the room, so they're working.
Like my assumption is it would be grossly overweighted by student housing, which is arguable whether that's actually helping to speak certain goals in our community.
Right, they've been looking at that in terms of trying to define what kind of target populations are housing, so.
They're adults. They're legal.
Non-students.
Okay, well, go with non-students.
The other piece of that though, Chris, is every time they're not competing in the larger market, like because they're in that student house.
Do you have any other? I know you've got that student.
I've, I've actually seen somebody fail a walking class. Not you three.
All right, it is seven thirty, so I am going to adjourn. And thank you all from, for coming. And I think it's a really productive meeting.
That was great, man.
Okay, cool. Bye, Laura.
Bye, Laura.
Bye, Laura.
Bye, everybody.